Help me in charge.
Turn the meeting over to Mike, he's kind of the honcho on this project.
Thank you sir, I'd like to welcome everybody here. I'm Mike Tietrow, I'm one of the five commissioners for the Champlain Fire District. Tonight's purpose of the meeting is a public hearing. We have to have two of these by law. This is the first one, we're going to be holding another one on July...
Eighteenth.
July eighteenth, it's the same place. And we're also going to be doing the same presentation at the village board and the town board next week. We have our consultant architect, Mr. Dave Winford here from ADS Northeast. He's going to do a fifteen, twenty-minute presentation. It's an overview of what we propose, and we're going to go through everything. I guess we'll take questions while we're going through it. You want to do it that way? If anybody has any questions, then at the end we'll take questions. Other than that, I guess we just need a motion from one of the members to open up the public hearing. All in favor?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chase wrote said, my name is Dave Whitcore, the principal architect at ADS Northeast by Perk. I've been working with your board a couple of years now to study the fire station and the space needs and issues with the building. And we've come up with a project over the past couple of years that we'd like to make a brief presentation to you about tonight. Before we talk to you about the project, we'd like to give you a little background about Champlain Fire District. So you have a little more information about what everybody does here. First, your Board of Commissioners, John, you just heard open the meeting. Chairman is a commissioner. Mike Tietrow, we're from him. Woody Kissel's here. James with Dave. Dale with Tietrow. And Tammy Barker is the board treasurer and secretary. You have a separate organization called the Niagara Hose Company. The officers for that are Pete Timmons, your fire chief. Pete here. Mike Baker. Bobby with Dave. Todd Jarvis. The Wicks. John Fillion. And Shane Green. I'm sure if you wanted to ask them some questions on your own, I'd be glad to try and answer some of your questions. And I also wanted to note that while we spent a lot of time planning over the past two years, Pete, your fire chief, and Todd from the Hose Company were very, very involved. They came to all the meetings and made a major contribution to the final design for this project. So they were very involved with the Board of Commissioners. Again, a little background about the Champlain Fire District. About 2,300 parcels are covered by the fire district. Obviously goes all the way to the Canadian border on the north, and Lake Champlain on the east. And on the south, it goes down almost to the village of Chez D. And on the west, it's bordered by St. John's Road, covering about 1,600 structures and 2,300 parcels. That's about 59 spare miles covered by the fire district. And they get about 175 to 200 calls per year, serving a population of 5,600 people. So that's kind of an overview of the fire district geographically and the area that's covered. Well, this is the basics of what we are located in right now, the current fire station. It's a one-story steel building. It was built in 1986, thirty years ago. The total floor area is 4,600 square feet, a total of four and a half bays. This multipurpose room that we're in right now, a kitchen and offices behind us. And the property is currently 3.1 acres. We'll tell you a little bit more about that when we talk about the property. But on the right-hand side, you can see a basic floor plan of the fire station. You can see the four fire truck footprints on the bottom, pacing Elm Street. And on the top, you can see the multipurpose room that we're currently located in. Other than that, you have the small kitchen and bathrooms and the office behind you. So that's the basic floor plan as it exists today. The original property map in 1985, when the district was first organized or formed, fire station footprint is shown in that pink block there on the left side of the screen. And then you'll see a yellow outline around that. That is the original property line that was used to form the fire district back in 1985. The board has since expanded the property by purchasing the property next door. And you'll see that on the overall site plan when you get to that point in the presentation. Pretty small, maybe an acre, acre and a half. So, a little more background about what Champlain Fire District does in terms of vehicles and equipment and services. We currently have three pumper trucks, a tanker truck, heavy rescue truck, a brush truck, personnel van, water rescue boat and trailer, a UTV trailer and affordable generator also on the trailer. The fire station is the headquarters and the home base for the Niagara Hose Company and Fire Department. And we have 46 volunteers currently. They provide services, all types of services. I didn't even realize fire departments do awareness from other fire departments over the years. They provide mutual aid to Vermont and Canada from here. Rescues on Lake Champlain, covering free border crossings at the border. They cover hazmat spills on the railroad and the interstate, Northway. They also provide animal rescue, cleanup in the community, such as fallen trees and things like that. They help conduct search and rescue. And they've also been called to assist the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on certain towns. Where the fire department provides assistance to the DMC. Just to give you a little more background about what volunteers go through to become a firefighter. They go through an initial 104 hours minimum of mandatory training on and off-site to become a member. And then 40 hours of training every single year to maintain that membership. And that's all volunteer time, of course. So this is some pictures of the current fire station. There is a pretty significant lack of space here because they're already renting space in town at another location to store some other vehicles. But you can see just in the photo on the left, it's pretty tight quarters in the current fire station. What's happened over the years is fire trucks have gotten bigger, like a lot of things. And so what used to fit 30 years ago doesn't fit anymore. And we've seen this on a lot of fire stations all over the North Country. They can see it's pretty tight quarters again in the second photo. Not really adequate space in an emergency situation when the firefighters are rushing to get to the vehicles and get out to the haul. And then on the right, there's a picture of the remote storage building located someplace else in the community. I think that's on Oak Street.
Yes.
On Oak Street, where they're storing the boat and the van and the UTV and the other fire rescue vehicle. Simply because there's not enough space here to keep all the vehicles at the fire station. So I just want to give you an idea, a real idea of the cramped conditions. So as Mike and I mentioned, this process actually started a long time ago. What we did here is kind of give you a brief overview of what homework they've been doing over the past couple of years. So this whole process started back in the spring and summer of 2012 when the board was discussing the lack of space, apparatus space, and some issues with the building as it was getting older. And then in 2014, the board decided to purchase the property next door and annex that to the fire station to expand the footprint of the property itself. Because like I showed you in the previous photo, the original property was pretty small. So in the spring of 2014, the board decided to initiate like a formal assessment of the fire station. They formed a project committee to look into that. And then in July, in the summer, they decided to engage a professional consultant to help with that facilities plan and study. And we looked at all kinds of variation, new fire stations, various additions, all kinds of different ideas to come to a final design that we're presenting to you tonight. So we spent the rest of 2014 exploring new stations, additions, renovations, all types of discussions. And then in November, we completed what we call the building condition survey and assessment, and basically concluded there was a severe lack of space. And there were some other issues with the building that everybody wanted to try and address, hopefully in this project. So the next spring and summer in 2015, we finished what was, at that time was thought to be the final plan that they wanted to present. It was an 8,600 square foot addition and various renovations for $4.2 million, $1,200,000. And the board thought about that a lot, and they paused for several months to really think this through, if this would be tolerable to the community. And they basically found this not to be acceptable. So we went back to the drawing board and said, how can we make this addition smaller? But how can we still meet all the goals of the project? Get all the vehicles over here, et cetera. So we spent quite a bit, you know, the remainder of 2015, basically, downsizing the project from what was conceived that summer of 2015 into the project that we're going to show you in just a minute. So that's what's been going on the past two years in a nutshell. So here is the proposed project. The first major feature of the project is to build an addition at 61 feet wide, 98 feet long. And I'll stop and reference the drawing for a second. You can see that drawing inset, the lower right corner. On the left side, you'll see a light blue area. That is the current footprint or floor plan of the existing station. On the right side of that, you'll see an area in pink, and that is the proposed addition. And I'll outline for you in a minute what those spaces are. But just to give you a general idea, the blue on the left, the existing fire station, and the pink on the right is the proposed addition. So the addition's going to consist of three large vehicle or apparatus bays, kind of in that middle of the pink area. You might be able to see the fire truck footprint there in the middle bay. So it'll be three additional large bays. A community room, it's on the far right-hand side in the pink area. That would accommodate 100 people seated at tables. Public toilets on the upper side of that pink area. And a new kitchen as well, with the pantry and cooler. And then a fire department office and conference room on the upper side of the new truck bays. The community room would be available for public functions, civic groups, trainings. Also serves as a command post. So there are some other minor alterations that the board has included in this project. Number one is to convert the existing multipurpose room that we're in right now as a standby room. And that's become a very common space in modern fire stations these days. And the fundamental concept is to separate the fire rescue personnel from public areas. The next basic minor alteration that's proposed is to take the current men's room and convert that into a decontamination room. And that's another requirement that has come along in the past several years, according to NFPA, National Fire Protection Association standards. That's a room where a firefighter can come back to the station immediately, go into the decon room and hose off the majority of the soot and stuff that they've collected while they were out firefighting. And the reason for that is, there have been many studies released in the past couple of years, especially since 9/11, that have found that unfortunately, a lot more firefighters are getting cancer at a much higher and faster rate than the rest of the population. And that's due to all the carcinogens and stuff that unfortunately they're contaminated by in a fire. All that soot and smoke and debris that unfortunately follows on their gear. And that's the reason for the decontamination room. So you're trying to get a firefighter in there, get most of it off, and then go through the rest of the building. Another minor alteration is to convert the existing women's room into just a unisex dedicated bathroom and add a new shower. Again, that would be strictly for fire rescue personnel. And then take the existing office, convert that into a radio room, and then also replace some siding and add some history on the building. So not a lot of alterations to the existing station. Again, the board had cut out a lot of things they would like to do, but the subject is too big and made it a lot smaller. Really cut back on renovations. So this is the proposed site plan now. So if we look at the drawing again, it's kind of on an angle because north is straight up. But in the blue block is the current footprint of the current fire station. And then the pink block just above that is the proposed addition. So kind of on the bottom of the screen in the drawing is Elm Street. And then you can see, you know, the rest of the different properties around it. So the area in pink is the 6,000 square foot proposed addition, 61 by 98. A couple of other major things that they would like to do with the property, with the site. Because the property gradually increases or gets higher as you go to the back, they need to do a lot of alterations to fit this addition into the property and make it work properly. So that fire trucks have adequate space. They need a lot of turning space for fire trucks to move them around the property. And in order to do that, you need some pretty big area. I don't know if you can see or not, but there's like a footprint of a fire truck here just to the right of the pink area. And you can kind of see, fire trucks range from 30 to 35 feet, some of the pumbers. And so they need quite a significant space for terminators. They'd like to regrade the log, you gotta add storm drains. There's a major storm drain that comes down through the property. Is that a public, is that a public storm drain? No, it's private. Comes from the neighborhoods in the back. Well, that's got to be dealt with. Repave the driveways in the parking lot. They'd like to do some improvements with the parking. Now in those yellow-stripped areas, you can see what we call parking blocks or parking strips. But we tried to get about 50 parking stations here so that if there's large functions going on, there's some true dedicated parking while there's still ample space to respond to emergencies, you know, around the station. So that's what the yellow strips are all about. A couple of more strips toward the house next door, and then a little more in the back. And a little bit of handicap parking right in front of the large community room. Another major issue that the board and committee wanted to solve was the very narrow driveway entrance on Elm Street for fire trucks to maneuver and get in and out of, in part, you know, in the current station. So what they'd like to do, you can kind of see in that orange area to the lower left, right up against Elm Street, would like to expand that driveway all the way across the width of the property to the west property line. So that that's just a wide-open driveway area, 50, 60 feet wide. So fire trucks can easily maneuver and pull in and back into the current truck bay and in and out. It's very difficult right now. I'm sure if you can tell it to speak to that even better than I can. So everybody wants to know how much it's going to cost. As I mentioned before, this project started out around $4.2 million. And then back in the end of 2015, the board cut out way over $600,000 from the project. So this is our current estimate for those plans that you just saw. The general construction estimate is $1,516,000. Mechanical, electrical plumbing, excuse me, $683,000. That's your heating systems, you know, your bathrooms, your kitchen, all your lights and electrical. Site work is the parking and the paving and the utilities. All those things that need to be done outside, $630,000. And then we have a line item called project development cost. That is the cost, what we call soft, also called soft costs in the industry. That's a design, construction drawings, bid specifications, bidding services, and oversight of the whole project during construction. The board also has to compensate bond council because if this project was successful, they would have to, you know, go for a bond for financing the project. And they have to pay a bond council to do that. Fiscal advisors have been involved. That line item also includes what we call a clerk of the works or an inspector, who would be on the job all during construction, inspecting the work. So it's all of those other things that don't go into the building that unfortunately come along with a project like this scale that have to be considered in the project budget. So that gets us to a total of $3,369,000. Now, your Board of Commissioners has been saving money, kind of anticipating this might appear someday. They're going to propose to take $250,000 out of the current reserves to help reduce the total project cost. You can see that on the next to last item. So that brings the net total project cost down to $3,119,000. And that's what the referendum, actually referendum will be 3.3. I don't know how that's worded. That's, I'm not sure if it'll be worded 3.1 or 3.3, but we'll figure that out in the vote. So what's it going to cost each taxpayer? So what we've tried to do on the bottom is estimate the tax increase for the average taxpayer. Now, it would have been around 80 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. But since they're using some reserve in current savings, that actually knocks the estimated tax increase down to 58 cents per thousand dollars of value. And then we were estimating the average assessed value of a home in the fire district is about $80,000. So if you convert that, there'd be an annual increase of approximately $47,000, I'm sorry, $47 per year, and if you break that down into 12 months, it's $3.87. So that's the estimate of what it would cost the average taxpayer in the fire district. Any questions on cost? So what would happen next if this project is successful and voters approve it? The next step after the meetings would be to design the project, repair all the construction drawings, specification, bidding documents, so forth. And that would take pretty much the rest of the year to do that so that we could bid the project in the winter of 2017. Now, the fire district is obligated to comply with all the general municipal laws, bidding laws, just like your town, your school, and any other municipal entity. So this project would have to be bid out to four contractors, a general contractor, a plumber, electrician, and a heating contractor. That's a state law. As consultants, we really don't like that law because it makes things a lot more complicated. The high, it makes the project more expensive. But unfortunately, the fire district is obligated to follow that. But that would happen in the winter of 2017 and award the construction contracts in the spring. And then the beginning of that process, there's a lot of approvals and ordering of materials. Goes along with that in the spring, and then the project will be built next year. And approximately complete around Christmas of 2017. So that's a rough schedule of what would happen next. Some final comments from the board. The fire station has been the home base during national disasters such as ice storms. They feel that this is a sensible addition and alterations project. It's more economical than a new fire station. And it's not a wish list. They feel that as an addition, it's necessary to house all the equipment under one roof and reduce the cost of operations.
So tell me, it's not a wish list. How does that, community room? What's the need for a community room in a fire station? I can understand the safety aspect of it, and I can also understand the equipment aspect of it. But I cannot understand a community room. Is it going to be open to the community? Is it, is somebody going to be here manning the room so if somebody wants to do something? Or is the insurance, the fire station insurance going to even be able to cover that kind of room for the public?
The community room was basically, we spent a lot of time talking about that. And we came to the realization that there are no places left in Champlain where you can organize a group of people in one room.
You gotta haul this down the road.
Where?
Time after time, no.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. The only place that is available...
So, but this community room was put in place even when that was there?
We had thought about it, yes.
Yeah, you thought about it. You know, it's awfully nice for you to offer a community room at the taxpayer's expense. I would rather see a youth center built in Champlain for the kids, so they would have the place to go.
Well, I agree with you there, but unfortunately, we're not in a youth-centered business.
Correct, and I understand that. Like I said, I understand the safety part of it, and I understand the space. But you're telling me this extra space that you're spending a year, $6,000. It would take 514 years to spend $3.1 million on.
Well, again, the community room was designed for the community at large for anything. I mean, if you had an event that you needed space for, it would be available through the fire department. It's going to be managed by the Niagara Hose, the fire company.
So is this room I charge?
It may, it may not be. I mean, there may be a cleanup fee.
How can you charge me on my taxes, then charge me for the room on top of it?
They do it all the time in Morris.
I'm not, I don't live in Morris, okay? I live here in Champlain. I can understand it's privately owned, but this is a public, so we're paying taxes on it?
We figured that we're supplying the room and...
At our expense?
Yes, everybody's paying for it, there's no doubt about that. I'm not disputing that. But somebody has to pay the cleanup cost. There's going to be some small costs associated with it. I don't think the fire department's looking to charge $200, $300 here for an event. I think they're looking at minimal cost for cleanup, and someone has to be responsible for it. So, yes, there probably would be a cost. There would be no alcohol, I know that's come up before. The days of the fire department with the Genesee cooler in the back, those days are gone. I mean, you talk about insurance, there's no way in hell we're going to have booze here. So, I mean, I could put that to rest right now. Am I correct, Todd?
There's another use to this space besides community room. We commit to this. About five years ago, the American Red Cross asked if we could make this building as a shelter. We had to say no. Because when you move in the Red Cross to house people, you're moving your emergency operations out of this building. So you can't do both at the same time. The ice storm was a perfect example. You had a Red Cross shelter, you had the army reserves in here. Basically, everything was dumped out in the weather to use every square foot in this building.
St. Mary's Fire was a priority.
St. Mary's Fire. But we've had floods, ice storms, major snowstorms, and a lot of those lately that got... But with this design, you can run a Red Cross to shelter. You can house other emergency agencies and run a service to service the public during emergencies and still keep your emergency operations up and running and housed in the same place. It is truly a multipurpose room. It does serve a function when you do have a major flood or a major disaster where people are dispossessing some of their homes and you need a place to put them away. The kitchen facilities, you need a place to prep food. We can't cook for the people. The health department had a lot to say in that. But we need a place to be able to bring food in and prep it so we can serve it in this instance. So it's not just for parties and stuff like that. It does serve a purpose for big operations.
And like I say, it would be nice if it was outside of the fire department. A separate building somewhere else. It would be nice if it would be for the actual community. I don't think this is going to be a community room. I think this is going to be members only, and that's it.
No.
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 You're...
It's not now.
It's not now.
No.
People have baby showers and whatnot here, birthday parties.
Never denied anybody?
Never.
What's that?
You've never denied anybody. You want to use it? Call Todd and use the room.
So all you've got to do is call him.
How many people know about this?
They all know about it.
We all know about it? I've been here for 46 years, I didn't know about it.
We don't agree, they're always new.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're trying to tell me everybody knows about it. Excuse me, I don't know about it, and I've been here 46 years.
Have you ever inquired about it?
No, I don't know.
Why would I?
Then you obviously haven't had a need to use it.
The thing about it is, this is not... The thing about it is, this is not...you're all saying that this is a public knowledge, which it isn't.
Yeah.
The community room would be for the general public, for the taxpayers, the town of Champlain? Yes, that's what we're saying. If you haven't heard that in the past, that's what we're saying now.
Okay, I understand. Now, one last question. Who's voting on this? Is it just the taxpayers?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
What most places do, and I'm sure that's probably what we're gonna do, they'll do like a fifty dollar charge when you take the building. The building is inspected when you leave. If it's cleaned up, and they don't have to hire anybody to come in and clean it up, then you get your fifty dollars back. Now, if you use the kitchen, you use the gas stove, you use this, you use that, then there's a twenty-five dollar charge on that to replace the gas and everything else that's there. Now, that's the way most people are doing it. I can't guarantee you that's the way we're gonna do it because we haven't went through that part yet. But, in my mind, that's what I want. There will be a charge to make sure that it's cleaned up. And I think you can picture that if the wrong person got in here and didn't have to clean it up, which they had.
I understand that.
And they do charge for the stuff used in the facility, to replace the stuff, in most places. And like Mike said, our insurance company has stuff, there's no alcoholic records. No matter what you do or what you are or anything else. Unfortunately, the insurance company runs it.
Right, liability insurance and the other...
But that's not a bad thing either.
No, it's gonna eliminate the use of the room or a lot of things.
That's not, it's beyond our control. I mean, we have to follow whatever the laws and the insurance says. I mean, if we had to get a license, no.
We're not getting into the liability of alcohol on the premises. With the dollar, the litigation that goes on today is just not worth it, personally, I don't see the need. Any other questions? Any comments? Everybody likes it? Nobody likes it?
Can I answer your question?
I got one comment on that. Mike, I think the big thing that the people don't understand is tax per... Is we gotta pay prevailing wage. We have no way out of it, we're municipal.
That's correct.
If I had somebody come to my house and change the light bulb, I could give them twenty dollars. They come here, same situation, change the same light bulb, same two-foot ladder, we gotta pay them two hundred, we gotta pay the prevailing wage, buildings.
It's the Wicks Law. They alluded to it. It's mandated by the state of New York.
Just about thirty percent of the cost of the building. Thank your governor and those guys, next thing you see him. Well, you're saying there's certain deficiencies in this building. Things that need to be repaired, this and that. But you guys have a large savings accrued up. More than what I thought the Champlain Fire Department would have. And those repairs gonna have been done with similar funding that you already had?
Again, we have to pay prevailing wage.
I understand that. You got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to dish through this project. Don't tell me you can't pay the contractor to fix some of the things that are wrong with the fire department president.
Well, that's within the thing. That's figured in. The stuff that we've got to fix in this part of it.
I understand that, but these things haven't been repaired is why I just... You're saying that there's certain things that need to be repaired currently, which haven't been repaired, it seems like it was being pushed off.
The building we care is looking on board. I think it's upgraded. I mean, we keep this building in top condition. The heating system, we did a lot of money into the heating system, the kitchen tops, the lighting systems. Building having nice looking here, taking advantage of their grants, you're close to lighting. Basically, the director is basically upgrading it to basically hitting standards. And we felt it was best that we use that money as part of a bigger project to do that.
The building...
In this case, it was basically to reduce the attitude on this overall project.
The building built thirty years ago was built to house the equipment at that time.
Correct.
As you see, things have grown, I mean, just look at the trucks out there.
Except for Champlain.
Part of me.
Champlain really hasn't grown very much. Half the buildings that were here are non-existent anymore.
Yes and no, there's been development.
I try through Champlain, just the village here. And it's almost like a ghost town going down the east.
The village is not the same as it was thirty, forty years ago, there's no doubt about that.
Correct.
I can't bring that back.
And so, our community really hasn't been growing very much, even economically, because job creation in this area is pretty much non-existent. Pretty much, you gotta travel to get some of this out. And the reasoning for having such a large fire department, and I understand the area-wise, but what is your normal response time on any fire?
Five minutes?
On any fire, five minutes.
Five, seven minutes tops?
Right now.
Right now, no.
Increasing the size of the fire department, how's that your response?
It's not gonna increase the time response on it.
What's that?
It's gonna increase it, it could be the time faster.
Okay, so...
Your only thing it's good doing is...
Like I said, I can understand the safety, and I can understand the safety of the fire trucks having the room for the fire trucks. But if it doesn't increase response time and help respond to fires quickly?
Actually, it would, because we house our boats and stuff up at another building. So it takes somebody to come, they have to go to the other building, move two vehicles that way, get the boat out. You got somebody in the water.
That's a...
And come back here and get...
If everything was here where we could just drive out the door.
So how big is this boat? Sixteen foot, twenty foot?
Sixteen foot, flat bottom.
So, the size of that building isn't very large, how is it...
No.
It's too big.
Right there.
I mean, depending on what the nature of the response is, it could be the boat, it could be the cabot on tracks or generator, or who else, the rush truck, so...
We keep the most frequently used vehicles here because of the response time issue.
But a smaller building couldn't be built here to house and keep the support. Would we rather have this three point one million dollar building?
The addition for the larger bays was to put the larger trucks into larger bays, you bring the smaller truck on the front base space because of the narrow doors.
There are minimum requirements that you have to have around fire trucks now to work for OSHA, PASH, whichever standard you wanna follow. And we clearly don't meet any of those. So part of this is to address that issue, safety issue, basically. Somebody opens the door and somebody gets up, they're gonna get hit with a door by a truck. There's a safety aspect to this also.
And this road will not be open to just the general public.
Just the registered voter, the registered fire district.
Landowners, right?
Registered voters.
It's like a school district. School vote.
That's set on New York's football, we don't have the choice on two votes and stuff like that. It's not a loss.
So, pretty much, we got a hundred votes probably in the bag for this heat collection to start. I got my work cut out.
Well, hopefully we changed your mind.
I just don't see the need for a community room. I can see the rest of it. I can see the rest of it. Don't say, I'm not against the fire department, I just can't see that community room. If the town, if the town would do something for our youth and, you know, build a community center, something like that, yeah, I could see that. I could actually dig into my pocket, you know, for that. But to say something that's probably not gonna be used and like you said, it's a... I have to go to the base gym, bring my son, he lives here in Champlain. I bring him there to shoot basketball and stuff like that, and there is nothing around here. I can see spending money on something like that for young people. And because Champlain is, you have to say, it's pretty much a ghost town today. You don't see very many people out, walking about, doing anything. There's really nothing for anybody to do. So, I can't see them using this community room. And it would be a waste of taxpayers.
Well, see, that's a matter of opinion. I think...
That's correct, correct.
I think the community room is gonna be a well-used, well-needed thing that the area does not have right now. It's a difference of opinion, I guess.
We'd have to do that before, before. We wanna hear this kind of stuff.
I mean, when we were scaling things back, we scaled that back considerably too because every square foot adds cost to the building.
And this is not quite a cost, this is just a benefit cost.
No, this is what we would be bonding for. When you vote on the twenty-sixth, this is the amount you're voting on.
Correct, so it could be lower or...
It could be lower, yes. It won't be higher. If it goes higher, we'd have to come back and do this all over again, and we're not doing that. I guarantee you, we're not doing that.
The state law would limit the fire district to that amount. I think it'll take three point three six nine in the referendum. And by state law, that cannot be exceeded. If the bids came in high, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and cut out more. What typically happens in these projects is they actually, the cost does come in lower, and the fire district can only bond what they actually spent. So if it comes in at three point one, that's all they can bond. They can't just take the rest of the money. And that's a state law as well. So that's what they would bond in the end, whatever it actually costs, as long as it's less than three point three six nine.
Now, this building is being, if it's approved, would be built looking ahead for the next thirty years. The lifespan of a building is typically thirty years. We're at the end of the typical life of this one. So, in theory, we should not have to come back to the taxpayers for another thirty years.
And as the district stands now, there is no debt in the fire district?
No.
No, outstanding debt.
Everything we have is bought for it.
Every truck that's out there is paid for. Yeah, we're buying.
If we, the board made a decision fifteen years ago that we were not gonna spend money on borrowing money for the purpose of what that implies. So this would be the district's only live building. Everything else is paid for. We don't like any interest.
No, I think we have a very efficient fire department, fire service. We spend a lot of time on our books and our budgets and watching stuff, so... If anybody is cheap when it comes to this, you can ask these guys, I'd probably be the one, so... You know, I don't see this as being wasted money.
And every third Tuesday of every month, we have a public meeting, the commissioner is built right at the house next door, and it's open to anybody that wants to come in.
The board, do you see any other publics living here? I'm just curious in general if everybody feels like less than four dollars a month is a reasonable, kind of a reasonable request. I spend four dollars of getting coffee and soda.
I've already got my taxes increased by eighty dollars a month already this year.
I'm sorry?
I already got my taxes increased eighty dollars a month this year, so, excuse me, I'm not a little happy.
Your local, your local town taxes or school?
No, I was out of that. I used to do water district, even though I don't perceive the county water.
Don't blame the fire department for the water district.
No, no, they needed it for the increased charge pressure on hydrants.
Yes, that's gonna be a definite benefit.
I have to tell you, hydrants are actually second to, like, the primary purpose of the water system is for the users. The fire protection is more of a fringe benefit, if you will, that comes with it. They don't have to have those hydrants out there. They're just putting it there to basically promote fire protection and pay back to the taxpayers and get a lower interest, a lower premium rate on your homeowners.
Should drop the ISO rating.
Well, they put a hydrant in your neighborhood, make sure you go back to your homeowners and say, hey, I got a hydrant.
That is very impressive, which should help you with training.
But they didn't do it to boost the fresh cut of hydrants, they didn't do the fringe benefit, they placed it in fire, all the users need to reduce the pressure.
Well, it also helps on ISO rating, which drives your insurance rate.
And we have lowered the ISO rating too. With these trucks and stuff like that, and training that we've done and stuff like this. We have reduced the insurance rate within the community.
Did that through the ISO rating? The ISO rating is your ability to protect property in fire emergencies. And with the improvement, with the equipment, and some changes that we've made in our procedures, we've improved that ISO rating. It should decrease the premiums of homeowners insurance. Now, it'll be hundreds of dollars for an average homeowner, probably not, but every little bit hurts.
I mean, there's a lot through it that people just don't understand, they don't see that we've all through it. There's a lot of stuff there. It's like the ISO rating, to get the rating down on that, there must be thousand hours or better. Just with the volunteers that went through to get this for it. We pay taxes, too.
I understand that, I understand that. It's just that, as a taxpayer myself, and seeing how, you know, already this issue of most people in the town, the tax minimum increase already, any additional cost to it is kind of unacceptable. I can understand the building, and I said that once, I can understand the safety part. There's certain parts that I don't like, and I don't agree, that's handy.
Any other questions coming? Sure?
Could you put the map of the fire district back up on the screen first? I'm almost reluctant to bring this up, but we're all here now. As the district, and I realize there'd be costs with this, but has this, and they probably have done this, you folks know this better than I, but there are some fire districts in this county that have a station one and a station two, a north end and a south end. Does anybody feel it would be advantageous to this district at some point moving forward now that the Rouse's Point end of things has been acquired, you know, as of late, right? The whole year was that picked up? They used Town Nine B and south of the village of Rouse's Point?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
I mean, the minute you add station one, station two, you're gonna add costs, and then how are you gonna man them?
Right.
I mean, we've talked about it, yeah.
Okay, I just, I looked at the, you know, the overall, and the reason why I bring this up, I lived in another area of the state for a while, but we went through a similar vote on something like that. They actually had, it was down in the Albany area, so already people are looking, I know, people are looking at me like it was different. It was a little north of Albany.
You got a bigger population.
Mile-wise, it was, and I'm from upstate New York, but I happened to be there for a while. Was there about a year, and about the time I was there, they put up this vote. They had a station one and a station two. So they propositioned a capital improvement at their station one, similar to what you wanna do here, which I know you need it here, things about drone. They went to a public vote and it was voted down. A lot of the people that lived in kind of a, kind of a triangle, if you will, were at the other end. Kind of some comments where at the time, had they offered to put up a smaller, perhaps two-bay station here in this end, we would've probably voted yes for it because it would've reduced some fire insurance. You know, there were some benefits that they felt would've... And I just wanted to ask that question, I guess, not to needle or to look, because I don't really have anything against what you're doing. I think what you're, I think the fire department provides a wonderful service here, I think your response time is good, I think you're, you know, you're providing a good volunteer service. I just didn't know it. X amount of dollars that would be approved if... X amount of dollars that would be approved, if, if moving forward someday, that would be an advantage down at, um, you know, nine B, Honeymore's Corners, down in that end of the, of the.
If it was mutual aid, everybody around us would probably respond sooner. I mean, nine B, you know, you got mutual aid through Rouse's Point or the other way through Shaysie.
Not to completely take away everything they were gonna do here, but just, you know, some people look at.
You already have it. You have it. It's built in through mutual aid.
Okay.
When we go out, Rouse's Point goes out with us, or Moores, or Shaysie. That's automatic. Why should, why should we build a station at Honeymore's Corners when you got a perfectly good fire department two miles further down the road?
Three of them coming in. Right, okay.
Okay, well, and when we did look at it, and we did research it, uh.
That's all I wanted to know. You know, I didn't want, again, I said I was hesitant to bring it up, because you usually bring fireworks with it, you know?
It's a real, it's a real good question, yeah. We did look at, like, you brought up the, uh, insurance premiums. Uh, the only areas that would've benefited by the increase in insurance premiums would've been the McFried Road, the west end of La Valley Road. That was the, the most remote section, the kind of farthest away from any fire station. If we were to put a station out there, there's nobody out there to man it.
No volunteers living there?
No volunteers on that end. The village is more or less your population, however it sounds.
I just know that we cover response time. I don't know how it works in South Plasberg, and I don't know how it works in Moores and Beatty County. Maybe they have volunteers that are more sparsely, you know, spread throughout their district.
Yeah, the dynamics are a little different, but we did look at that.
Morris has big trouble with.
Managing, either, or providing the personnel to respond from that station. It probably becomes counterproductive.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, it never gets out.
I think they add maybe two people that are near the station. If they're available, they get the truck out. So it's, and that was, that was the biggest factor. It took it, put it farther away from your.
The center of the protection area. Thank you.
But going back to Jim's ISO rating, to board your homeowners' insurance, that's always put in place. They went to our dispatch, checked on our times, third night to be out, laboring departments. Were set off like, here's day eighty-seven, and they went to that north end. And then, uh, south of McFried Road, Shaysie's stuff, depending on location, around that new building. Here in the village, the trucks, where around that. So if we get a fire, they're home. We did all the paperwork. We had to go back to ten departments. So if we have a big, massive casualty of, say, a plane going down in our area, we gotta go back to ten heavy rescue trucks, so try and pick them out if everybody, pick your full two fifty to buy. But that's all in your ISO rating, so on the mutual aid, your second station, really, when you teach a lot of that.
Good explanation. And I wasn't bringing, everybody knows I live in the village of Champlain, so I feel I'm very well protected here. So it wasn't to, I, it just, it was a thought as I kind of looked at that map, like it flashed up on, on the screen, but.
I'm glad you asked, because it's a very good question.
That's the purpose of this. I was saying, questions if you have out there?
Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Turn it back over to John.
To who?
On the paper? All right. John, I thought you.
Motion to close the meeting.
To who?
Second hand.
On the paper?
All right.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for attending. We wish we had more people here to vote questions to us. We really do.
We have another on the eighteenth, and the two, uh, village boards and town boards are gonna get the same presentation, so. So we hope we see you on the day of the vote. Hope it's all positive.
So the vote is Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, right here, gonna be set up just like another general election, like you know, like that. Three to nine P M.
Thank everybody for coming.
Thank you all very much.